Thank you. Good evening. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. Before we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, I will take roll call. Councilman Goldsmith?
Here.
Councilman Trellinger?
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Present.
Councilman Jenkins?
Present.
And Mayor James. And Councilwoman Bryant Ward, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you very much. All right. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Council, if you all have had the opportunity to read the minutes, I will entertain a motion to accept the three minutes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, three. I move that we accept the town council work session special meeting minutes for May 10th, 2022. Town council work session special meeting, May 17th, 2022. Town council meeting minutes, May 24th, 2022.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. I just, I guess from my own education, should the minutes include, for instance, we had a public hearing, should the minutes include folks who testified, or at least a list of those names? I'm just, I don't know the answer to the question. I'm just curious. Is that a practice or not?
That is a great question. And either Director Harrington, Michelle, or Mr. Town Manager, do you, Mr. Town Clerk, I mean, do you have an answer to that?
They probably could be, as evidentiary elements added to the minutes, but we're in new territory, at least for me. So if you'd like to make an amendment to have them corrected as such, I'd be more than happy to try and do that.
I mean, I would just ask the question, and I would just defer to the council. Would you want to do that or not? Is that, just, again, just for the record that we know who testified?
It's entered into public records, so it doesn't necessarily needs to be in our meeting minutes.
Well, but somebody reads the minutes, how do they know that's been in the record?
Because it says that we had a public hearing.
Right, but...
But I don't think, all they do is present. We don't get to have a dialogue there.
Absolutely true. I guess I just was curious why they're not there, that's all. I would prefer that they're there, but I would defer to the majority of the council.
Heard anything to put them in there? So if it doesn't hurt anything, put them there.
I would like to know if it's standard procedures, you know, if we can review to see if that's standard, you know? If it's not standard, I, you know, I'm not in favor of it.
That's a good question.
And I agree with that as well. So if we could accept the minutes after discussion, we have a motion, and we have a second. If the standard procedure is to include that, because it does indicate that we have a public hearing, those are, we don't have the minutes of the public hearing, it just indicates that we have a public hearing. I think that that is a separate issue, but if it is standard operating procedures to include it in the minutes, then we will make an amendment. Mr. Town Clerk, if you could make sure that...
Actually, Madam Mayor, real quick, as a point of order, the minutes of the public hearing will include, should include and will include all of those elements. These minutes are perhaps a little premature in that regard. I will research that more and get back to you about it, but under the, under the section that speaks specifically about what was in the public hearing, everything that was in the public record up to that point should be there. And anything that's added afterwards will be added in the meeting that's afterwards, but I don't think we've seen the minutes for those yet.
Okay, so if I hear you correctly, Mr. Town Clerk, you're saying that the minutes that are presented to us tonight may be amended with the town, the public hearing minutes? So we may be premature on approving these minutes? Is that what I...
I have to admit, yes, that's what I've said, but I have to, I have to go back and look at these minutes and see what, what is missing. There shouldn't be anything missing. Everything that was on the agenda for that evening, including anything that was already in public record, is included in these minutes. Anything that came after that, that is, as Councilwoman Bryant Ward suggested, already in the public record, does not appear in these minutes, because that is a meeting that we have not had, if that makes sense.
Yes, council, does that make sense?
Mayor James, if I could, for, this is Michelle Minor, Assistant Town Manager. Our minutes are reflective of action items only, of action taken by the council at that time. It's usually not any discussion or anything else added to the minutes.
Okay, so it sounds like it's a thorough, the minutes are thorough. All right, so I have a motion. I have second. Any further discussion? All in favor of passing the minutes as presented, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the public forum. If someone would like to speak, I ask that you state your name and whether you live in the incorporated town limit, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? Hearing none. We'll move on to the chief's report. I hope you all had the opportunity to read the chief's report. Do I have any questions from council for the chief?
Did I read in there that we have two more police officers that are on the street?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Yeah, two graduated the Animal County Police Cabinet last week. Officer Kelly started today, I mean, still training, and Officer Miller starts tomorrow, field training.
How many vacancies we still have?
We have one vacancy. Corporal Smith left us this week to join the drawdown sheriff's office. So that's one, and then July 1, we have two additional, so we're looking for three officers.
They said include the promotion of Officer, what's his name?
Norris?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, because we eliminated a sergeant's position and added a lieutenant's position.
Okay.
Go ahead, Matt. Oh, right, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. Chief, thanks a lot again. You asked my question about the two officers. That's terrific. On this, I guess the second slide over call service, it says in red letters, significant trend.
Just trying to figure out exactly, I mean, so what is the implications of that, or why? Implications is we have more call stack. We have more calls coming in. We have basically the same amount of officers answering them. This is a region-wide trend.
Okay.
Coming out of COVID. There's lots of theories. I don't think we're going to have a full understanding as to why for several months down the road, but we continue to see mental health calls. We continue to see domestic violence and things such as that. So we're keeping a close eye on it. We're watching that trend. I wouldn't say it's alarming yet, but we're moving in the direction of concern.
I was, and I apologize, I wasn't trying to apply that. I was just trying to get a, I was just trying to get a more strategic overview, and you provided that. Thank you.
Call me when the...
Yes.
See something, say something.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And then I just see on the slide where it has the picture of the Southern Maryland Traffic Safety Initiative.
Yes.
I would commend the region doing that, so thank you.
Chief, I wanted to ask, back to that slide two, I know that, I mean, is it safe to say that, in general, during our time of COVID, that calls were down?
Calls were down.
So it's hard, because we're looking at, you know, maybe data that was already, I mean, 2021 was already down. I mean, where would we look to comparable rates, like, I mean, 18? Is that how far we've been since a normal summer or spring? Because I know usually we see spikes, right, when school's out and when the weather's nice, and you see that reflected in the trends. But as far as a comparison between 21 and 22, is that as jarring as it may be in comparison to 18?
Probably not, but one of the things that I always monitored was months where we answered more than 1,000 calls for service. And in any given year pre-COVID, we might have four months, and they were usually July, August, November, and December. And it may vary a little bit, but to have what we're looking at now, 12 months over 1,000, there's reason for it beyond just normal calls for service. And I think it's as we come out of COVID, we're just seeing more and more activity.
Okay, thanks for pushing that out.
And if needed, I have calls going back to 2014. We could put a slide together to kind of show you. I think it would be kind of a lot of data there.
I don't mean for you to make a, create a whole case study on it, but I know, just based on, just prior involvement with Crime Watch, that, you know, the year-to-year, we saw consistently that it was going up in the summer months, but I was just wondering about the comparison between the COVID and non-COVID, but it's so long ago. The population changes and everything else, it's hard to probably compare.
During my tenure, coming up on my ninth year here, and we have gained between 5% and 7% in calls for service average annually. So some of it's just our communities growing, and we have to understand, we sit on the 301 Ford, and that's where a lot of our calls for service come from. So as traffic increases, I fully anticipate our calls for service numbers increase as well.
Thank you.
Chief, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward three. If you could do a cause, the last full year before COVID was 2019. COVID hit March 2020. And so if we could do, look and see what the trends look like, March, I mean, 2019 to compare to 2022, that would be excellent. I think 2020, 2021 might be outliers, if we could look at that. Is there anything that you wanted to bring to our awareness in your report?
One thing that's not in the report is we have stuff with Squad Car on Saturday, 8:00 and noon at the Safeway. This is something we do annually for lifestyles of Maryland's Summer School Plus program. So for young people who would not have a meal in the summertime, what we do is try to fill the food bank with donations at Safeway for lifestyles, and they're the ones who do all that. I mean, they pack those lunches every day and get them out to the kids. But it's just something we, we try to do. We usually give about four SMDs full of food, which is...
I saw on your Facebook page, you had the items. If you could send a list of those items to us, because everybody's not probably, you know, aware of what items you want, because you don't want everything, that would be great. And what's the timeframe again?
8:00 to noon, before it gets too hot. And the only other thing was that we're very proud of Corporal John Pierce. Only three officers statewide are selected to win the Maryland Chiefs of Police Exceptional Performance Award, but our officers have won it back-to-back years, which makes us very proud. He's a hard-working guy, and we fully anticipate Governor Hogan to present him his award at the joint meetings of the chief and sheriffs in September.
Outstanding.
And I just, again, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four, again, thank you for the coffee with the cop. I got a lot of good, positive feedback from that.
We're glad to do it. Anything you need, we'll be calling it down.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next is Director Harrington's report. Does anybody have any questions for Director Harrington?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Jenkins, again, Ward four. Thank you, Director Harrington. Again, a good PowerPoint slides and good information. I've gotten some really good feedback about your webpage and the monthly update. People find that very informative. Just one quick question with respect to the, some permits regarding Heritage Green and the neighborhood. I guess that will someday have access into AgroCopia. Is there any issue there about letting those folks know that there'll be some future access point for that smaller, I think it's, I think it's Neighborhood K?
It's Neighborhood O. Neighborhood K is the one that they're working on right now. Neighborhood O is the smaller one with 66 units.
Okay.
So we can certainly look at different options where the developer is still active with the HOA. So I think it would be best to reach out to the HOA and, and work with them.
So would, so would they do that? Would D.R. Horton do that, or would we, or we as the...
It could be a group effort.
Okay. I guess I'm just concerned about them being surprised, that's all.
Well, I understand your concerns, and like I said, we can work with D.R. Horton and the AgroCopia HOA to make sure that notifications are sent when they get ready to start doing their grading in, in that area.
That would be terrific, because again, there may be opposition, and I get that, but hopefully there'd be less, or at least have full transparency and disclosure, so they know what's coming. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Madam Mayor? Director Stahl was adding a comment.
I just wanted to... Bobby Stahl, Director of Operations. Councilman Trellinger and I met out there with several of the citizens dead on Olive, which is the connecting road that will connect to Section 12, and they were fully aware of the connection. It is something that all of the neighbors earlier do know, and we had an active conversation about that the other day. So I don't think, at least for the people on Olive Drive, it is clear that there is a plan, and there was always an eventual plan for the connection into AgroCopia. And it will be for some time in the future their only point of connection. I think everyone was aware of that. So it already is a little bit, and that's what we've got here. It was...
Thank you, Director Stahl, and thank you, Councilmember Trellinger. I know that's your ward. I didn't mean to step out of bounds, but thank you for, thank you for reaching out. That's great.
Anytime where we can eliminate surprise for construction or elements, you know, in our neighborhoods, no matter whose ward it is, is a good opportunity, so...
Thanks for doing that. That's great.
Never have to apologize for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Director Harrington. Hi, it's Director Stahl. Just stay on there. I hope that you all have been able to read Director Stahl's report. Do you have any questions for Director Stahl? All right.
Madam Mayor, again, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. I just, I know we've had some discussions. I know you're working on Redwood Lake, and it's great, because it looks good now, because they cut it and the seeding started, or has been done. Will there be any more trash cans or receptacles put there? And I've had people ask me, would the walkway be put back or not?
Answer to the walkway question is trying to eliminate, we are part of, when we discussed in the safety committee about some of the striping through there, we were planning to strike through there and create a striped walking path on the existing road. So that the width of that, but we were, as part of our stormwater management efforts, trying to eliminate vertical surface where...
Okay.
So that was one where we felt there was plenty of width to the paving at Redwood Lake, and we could just pay, I mean, excuse me, paint a stripe down there to create the walking path along the Redwood Lake edge in the existing street. So that was the goal for that. I will say that Redwood Lake, and part of the reason why we haven't done any more work out there is because Redwood Lake is one of the stormwater management facilities that is planned for the MS4 upgrade. And so we are bringing forward a contract to do the design of the changes to that lake for the MS4 upgrade. Although we did, we were working on just clearing, making the seeding down. To be honest, it was really temporary seeding, because at some point in the near future, our intention is to go in and make the changes that will be necessary to meet the new MS4 requirements to that lake, which will most likely involve creating some floorways in that, in that lake, maybe some changes to the outfall. So there are going to be some changes to it as part of the upgrade. And we didn't want to go in and do a whole bunch of fundamental changes, when we knew that means, right back in there within the next year, doing more changes to the lake. So we wanted to get it seeded as quickly as we could and get everything graded off to just, you know, make it reasonable for the summertime for people to enjoy, but with the full knowledge that we were going back in to do changes in it.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant, Ward three. Director Stahl, if there's anything in your report that you want to highlight, please do so, but I would like to ask, have you had any more discussions about the water appropriations?
We have a meeting with the county tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. We had a very, what I would call, and the mayor was involved, we had a meeting with the state. We sat down with the new secretary, Secretary Tabata. Secretary Tabata is the new secretary of the Department, and we did schedule a meeting with him approximately two weeks ago. I think it was a very positive meeting. I would indicate that the town and the state are on reasonable, in reasonable agreement as to where things should be. I do think it's been interesting that as soon as that meeting ended, two days later, we got a notice from the county that they wanted to leave with us. So apparently there happened some discussions between the state and the county. So that's good. I mean, it's positive we were about working.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I see. Any other questions?
Well, I just, you asked me if I was going to announce some things. I think one of the things, and thank you all very much, we did get the Little Lake Pump Station cleaned out the last two days, if you happen to notice, and trucks were down there. We were hauling. We actually, I was amazed at how, we probably removed seven feet of grease off the top of the pump station. It was, we hauled six tractor-trail loads of grease out of that pump station, so that was, it was bad. We normally had been cleaning it out in the late winter, so we normally would be doing it in February, March timeframe. And because of the inability to get in there and back stuff in, we had been waiting. And then we tried to schedule it in early May, and we couldn't get on time schedule. But we did, in the last two days, we worked yesterday, today, we get it cleaned out. It turned out very positive. We got everything cleaned out, and they all set up us to clean out the inlet, to get some of the grit out of the inlet at the wastewater treatment plant. So that was very good. The sewer line project that we're doing at the wastewater treatment plant, as you know, we started that project, and we now have run the 24-inch sewer line up the hill, and we're right at the top of the hill at the wastewater, coming up the hill right there, and we will be moving across the top of the hill now with that sewer. So that project is progressing well. It will be a tremendous add for the town to have a second feed for the plant, and we're working diligently to get that carried out. The other thing, I think the visitors were kind enough to send a letter about the project at the end of Whale's Drive, which had seriously been a bane to us in the, in the operations department, but now that we have the easements dedicated, we did go over there and completed that project.
Still my thunder. I was gonna, my time, I was gonna, I was gonna thank you for this. So if council didn't know, we got a lovely letter from a resident as to how great of a job Director Stahl and his team did, as well as Mr. Manuel, in getting this set up and taken care of in an efficient way as soon as we were basically legally allowed to do so. So I know it's oftentimes, you guys get the call when things are crumbling, and people are angry and upset, but it's nice when our residents recognize the hard work that you do, and, and when you do it very well, and we should recognize that. So I appreciate that you were able to get that done, taken care of quickly, and I think it was helpful that they let everybody know how great of a job you guys did.
And there are many more.
Sure.
It's just not, that's just a very, very, very typically iceberg situation. But I think as we saw yesterday, when they had the closure of 408, where they had those two major sinkholes open up, we're certainly not alone in this problem. That was State Highway.
Right.
The sinkholes are still there and are just laid it off. There are numerous all over the place, county roads, town roads. We're all facing similar type of challenges when it comes to stormwater. Under it, the old galvanized pipe, it just doesn't last very long, and it's rusting out everywhere, creating challenges for us, and we're going to have to continue to work with that. So all of the things I, I think are, we're moving forward. I will point out that our next large stormwater project will be at the end of Discovery Court, which I believe is in Councilman Smith's district, City of Jamestown. And at the end of Discovery Court, we have about 200 feet of stormwater pipe that has opened up the entire basin that dropped in. And so we are underway over there, and we have to pull, we're going to pull 150 feet to slipline the pipe that's under the whole quarter, and then we will directly stub out over to the pond. So there's a major project area for us in the town. It takes kind of a few spare guys that we have. It has to be an all-hands-on-deck, but we're going to try to attempt that possibly next week. So that's the next major project. And of course, we're working with contractors, as we did at the end of Wales, to try and get that. But in today's environment, it's very, very tough to get, everybody's so busy right now, that it's very, very tough to get contractors and to get things accomplished. So we were appreciative that Austin Dirtworks sent a crew over to help us with Whale's Drive. That worked out very well. We do, we have quite a few other studies we need to do, and we have quite a few projects submitted right now. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Stahl. Done, done. All right, next on our agenda is legislation. Emergency ordinance 22-12 Personnel Policy Vacation Leave for Introduction and Consideration. Ms. Minor, Assistant Town Manager Minor, would you please read the ordinance? Or not the ordinance, just the description?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Emergency ordinance 22-12 for Introduction and Consideration tonight. Emergency ordinance concerning Town Personnel System Vacation Leave for the purpose of amending the vacation and parole section in Town's Personnel...
Manual and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept emergency ordinance 22-12 as presented?
I move we accept the ordinance, emergency ordinance 22-12 Personnel Policy Vacation Leave as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one is Emergency Ordinance 22-13.
Madam Mayor, Emergency Ordinance 22-13 for Introduction and Consideration, and Emergency Ordinance Concerning Town Personnel System Bereavement Leave for the purpose of amending the bereavement leave section in the Town's Personnel Manual and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept Emergency Ordinance 22-13 as presented?
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, I move that we accept emergency ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen town personnel system bereavement leave as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty-two dash fourteen design review board code revision for introduction and discussion.
Madam Mayor, ordinance twenty-two dash fourteen for introduction and discussion. And an ordinance concerning design review board code revision for the purpose of amending chapter sixteen, design review, revise the composition appointment and terms of the design review board, rules, quorum, and meetings for the design review board and all matters generally relating to design review and the design review board.
Assistant Town Manager Minor, does that mean that, is it really for discussion and not for adoption? We're just talking about it, so no action is needed, or should that be adoption?
No action is needed tonight. It's just for introduction and discussion. It'll come back for you.
All right. Do I have any discussion on, on this from the council? And Director Harrington's online as well.
Basically, Jim Goldsmith, Ward one, I'm one of the design review boards, the council representative. We ran into an issue here two weeks ago, which we did not have a quorum. And that's because we actually, I think it's eight members we have on the design review board. And we had to have five to get a quorum. So we actually lost the opportunity to make decisions that particular day. Every other committee we, stuff we have is basically five, quorum of three. So we're trying to just bring the design review board down, do the rest, everybody else is that.
So I'm Councilwoman Bryant Ward, so you're saying that you're going to have eight committee members? And you're going to make the quorum three?
No, no.
Okay.
We have five.
Okay.
With an alternate and a quorum is three.
Okay. Do you currently have eight?
We currently have, current instruction says eight.
Says eight, but do you have eight?
We didn't have it at the last meeting. We have eight on the books, but we didn't have them there to take votes.
So if you're saying that your committee will be, will consist of five members, what are you going to do with the three, the three members that you have over eight right now?
I think most of those are expiring anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Director Harrington?
I can say we, we don't have actual eight on the board. As we know, unfortunately, Mr. Turgeon passed away this past month. So we are short on members and I believe that our legislative team was actively looking for new members to try to fill those spaces. We do have five active as we are right now. So that will work into that and we'll look for an alternate.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. And, and thank you, Councilman Goldsmith, for that clarification as well. That brings us over to resolution.
Oh, sorry. Can I, this is Matt Challenger, Ward two. I just had a question as to, you know, moving from eight to five, and perhaps Director Harrington may address it. Is there a reason why for this particular board that we had eight? Do we lose something by going all the way down to five, other than what's presently available for our board?
I don't know why it was chosen to have eight in the past. There are specific requirements under the code for the types of members. But when you add those up, it doesn't equal to eight. So you, you have to have someone that is a design professional of some sort with either landscape architecture, architecture, engineering. You have to have a business owner. You have to have just a resident of the town. So there's four, four or five that are required positions. So I'm not sure entirely why eight was chosen in the past. So we're, we're not losing anything by bringing the number of board members down to five and will still be in compliance with the required members as noted in the code.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That moves us on to resolution twenty-two dash sixteen for introduction and consideration of adoption.
Madam Mayor, resolution twenty-two sixteen, a resolution concerning integrated parcel management SaaS, Municity Suite, a set of hosted software products for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for professional services in an effort to enhance building, planning, and code enforcement department processes to increase efficiencies and add an easy to use online system for constituents and all matters related thereto. Whereas the director of planning has evaluated the quote, the quote from ICC Community Development Solutions Municity and recommends that the town enter into a contract with ICC Community Development Solutions in the amount not to exceed seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. And whereas town codes C eight twenty-three and town code chapter forty-three requires that all expenditures in excess of twenty thousand dollars be advertised for sealed bids, except for expenditures which the town council by ordinance has determined are not subject to sealed bid requirements. And whereas town code chapter forty-three, section forty-three four provides for provisions in the case of contracts for professional services, these shall not require the publication of notice of intent of the town to secure such professional services in a newspaper of general circulation. And whereas town code chapter forty-three, section forty-three five provides that the town council may, by a two-thirds majority, authorize the bypassing of any and all bid procedure steps in cases which warrant such approval by the same two-thirds majority. It may allow the chief executive officer to directly negotiate with any supplier if it is in the best interest of the town to do so. Now be it further resolved by the town, by the council of the town of La Plata that Brent Manuel, town manager, is hereby authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of La Plata, a contract agreement with ICC Community Development for Integrated Parcel Management SaaS, Municity Suite, a set of hosted software products for an amount of seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars in accordance with the ICC Community Development Solutions proposal dated twenty-third of May, two thousand twenty-two. Now be further resolved by the council of the town of La Plata that the town treasurer is authorized to appropriate funding utilizing fund balance should the FY twenty-three budget be exceeded. Adopted in through the council.
That was eloquently read. So this is for consideration of adoption tonight or just consideration? Or is it just an introduction?
Well, we have it for introduction and a consideration of adoption.
Okay, great. So after this has been read, do I have a motion from the council to accept resolution twenty-two dash sixteen as presented?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept resolution twenty-two dash sixteen, Municity five as presented.
Do I have a second? I will second it. All right. We're going to open it up for, for discussion.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant Ward. So this proposal was dated May twenty-third. Is the price still going to be the seventy-three nine fifteen? How long was the proposal for?
Director Harrington?
So the May twenty-third date was the date that, that was submitted to us. If you go to the actual proposal, now that I'm remembering, we presented that at the, which meeting? The seventh?
I think so.
I think it expires in three months from May. So it would be July or August, if I'm remembering correctly.
I think it's August.
As long as it's still good, no worries. Thank you.
Okay. Any other further discussion?
Madam Mayor, Dave Jenkins, Councilperson Ward four. I, I certainly understand the urgency to do this. I, my only pause frankly is this isn't necessary that this particular software that's specific to planning, and I understand why. Should it be integrated or can it be integrated? Can it talk to other software that other departments may be using? Or would it be compatible if and when we update our town website? My concern is that we all have separate departments and they're all doing different software packages. And are they integrated? And should we have some kind of a strategy to figure out how they can all talk to each other?
Director Harrington, would you like to peel that one?
So I do not know if it, and I don't think it integrates in with Dude Solutions, which is the operations software. It does integrate in with Incode, which is what the finance department utilizes. The software itself is cloud-based, so it would just be a link on our website. So it doesn't need any integration on that end. And it will integrate in with our existing credit card software that finance utilizes for payments. So I think the only disconnect would be with Dude Solutions as that is a separate asset management software. The urgency for the planning department, I, I think that the, you know, everybody kind of, like you said, we do have our own softwares and the, like, the intergov system that planning department is currently utilizing is no longer working. We, it just, it's barely hanging on by a thread with using Internet Explorer mode. We had done an upgrade to try to utilize the Microsoft Edge Internet Explorer. However, the upgrade was not what they told us it was going to be. And I've been the admin on the intergov side since I kind of started taking over for the fixing anything, if there's fees that need to go in, if there's a workflow that's not working correctly. Well, for some reason with the upgrade, I was no longer made an admin. So I cannot go in and fix anything. And the software itself with the upgrade does not function the way that we need it to function. We can't search for permits. We cannot use it functionally the way that we currently are. So after speaking with our IT consultant and with Brent and with Kevin, this is kind of an urgent issue for the planning department. If the Internet Explorer mode stops working, we will not have any permit software to utilize. So I know that it would be ideal to have one system for the whole town. But at this moment in time, I don't think we have that luxury.
Okay. Any other questions?
That, that just does, I mean, clarify some other, other concerns I had. So thank you for that. I, I guess moving forward, and I certainly appreciate and understand the urgency. I would just add for further discussion, not necessarily tonight, that we look at with our IT consultant or maybe even somebody else, a way to have an integrated system that is functional, that, that would be my only pause. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Jenkins. Any other questions? So I have a motion that has been properly seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. It brings us to new business, the commission reports. Councilman Goldsmith.
Yes, the design review board did meet last week. Two major items were on the discussion. One was new construction and demolishing of the motel up there by the Dash Inn and building a car wash, a new tunnel car wash, much better than what they have existing on their property at this point in time. And that was with the vacuum stalls and everything else. So that was approved. And the second one was Kathleen Place, which is for storage. Seven one-story buildings for new storage, again, which is up on Washington Avenue at the end, where you have the storage on the right-hand side. Now this will be storage on the left, left-hand side going into that area there. So that was approved. Those were two major items.
Thank you very much. Councilman Challenger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Matt Challenger with Ward two. Unification is meeting actually tomorrow at 10 o'clock. So typically, we won't have reports for July and August, but we may the next time around for tomorrow's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, no updates on the planning commission.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. The Parks and Recreation Commission did not meet and we're not meeting again, I believe, until September. As I understand, August, I'm sorry, I was corrected. Thank you, Assistant Town Manager. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you very much. And for me, I'm very excited next, or this Friday in a couple of days that we will be on Channel Five for, for Zip Trip. So we'll have Zip Trip coming down here at, we'll be setting up at, oh my goodness, five AM. They'll be broadcasting six AM to 11:00. And so I encourage everyone to come down and see a live broadcast here. We also have the summer concerts that are in full bloom on Friday and the attendance has been outstanding. We have the kids show, our first kids show that's going to be on June twenty-eighth, which is the Blue Sky Puppet Theater. And then we have our July fourth celebration. And then last but not least, in July, we are going to have July fifth, the Bright Star touring theater will be here to entertain the, the kids at 10:00 AM. Other than that, just keep on visiting our farmer's market. They are doing phenomenal. They just had a great car show a couple of days ago. And they're always adding new things in there. And, and of course, our train station, our train station museum is open on certain Saturdays. So make sure that you go by there. And that's the end of my report. So with that, I move to. Yes.
As the board has seen, as the council has seen fit to move the Hawthorne Yards public hearing to June nineteenth, so that they can consider several more things and, and also there was a delay in, in paperwork. And also with an effort to keep it within the 30 days of the original public hearing so that we could maintain all of the progress that I made up to that point. It has been brought to our attention, not that we didn't know, but it was a concern of a citizen that June nineteenth is also election day.
July.
Hey, I'm sorry, July nineteenth is also election day. The polls are open from seven AM to eight PM and our public hearing is apt to happen at six, in the six o'clock hour. It is at the discretion of the council if they would like to pursue this public hearing with, in the 30-day limit, or if they would want to, in, in consideration for election day and having everybody have the opportunity to make it to the polls, postpone it once again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Town Clerk. I will start off saying that since the time is from seven AM to eight PM, I do not have a problem holding the hearing that day. The only other options we have, so we don't have to advertise again, is either on the eighteenth or the twentieth. So council, can you weigh in on if you're okay with July nineteenth as having the public hearing for Hawthorne Yards, or would you like it on the eighteenth or twentieth? Councilman Goldsmith?
Oh, what time did you say it was going to be?
It'll be six PM.
That meeting? I don't have a call.
Okay, Councilman Challenger?
While the polls are open for an extended period of time, people's schedules are not. So I, I'd, I'd lean towards choosing a different day. Either the eighteenth or the twentieth. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I'm fine with the nineteenth, but if the eighteenth is the preference of the council, then I'm, I'll support that.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Councilman Jenkins, Ward four, I would prefer either the eighteenth or the twentieth rather than during the primary voting.
Okay. Could you, so we'll check our schedules and let's, let's put it on the eighteenth, July eighteenth. I hear it's a real special day. I might be wearing a tiara because it's my birthday. So anytime we can have a gathering there, there you go. So let's see if we can do July eighteenth on Monday and, and have the public hearing there.
Very good, Madam Mayor. We'll make it happen.
Thank you very much. So with that, I move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you all so much. Great meeting tonight. Have a great night. We'll see you at Zip Trip on Friday. Bye.